Testing, testing. We are testing our mics out. Does it pick up our clicks? We've got two minutes, just so everybody knows. But we are live.
Do our speakers need to come up front?
They are not required to come up front, but if they're off-screen, they need to state their name and their position prior to speaking.
You can be on the screen, it's fine.
Nobody wants to miss.
Yeah, that's another point. They might not be up here. They probably should come up to the front of the class.
They're probably just... They'd probably be best just to speak louder than normal. This is very strong.
We'll work out the kinks as we go, but speak clearly.
I call this meeting to order. This meeting will be livestreamed and will be accessible through YouTube. All participants should be aware that they are being recorded. For camera purposes, please state your name and position prior to speaking. I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes from June 17th, 2025, council meeting minutes. I make that motion. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Citizens, no citizens, would you like to go?
All right, Grace Caswell, Visit Noble County Convention and Visitors Bureau Chief Executive Officer or CDO. I'm just here to make an annual update and presentation. I provided a couple of handouts to all council members so they can review it. Ultimately, I'm here just to report what's been going on at the Visitors Bureau for 2024 and our plans for 2025. We are incredibly thankful that one of the community members from Cromwell that also sits on town council is also representing Cromwell on our board, and that is Tiffany, so I do want the record to say a big thank you for Tiffany. She's been able to commit to attending meetings, advocating for Cromwell, and always including the west side of the county's perspective and unincorporated community into discussions that happen at the Visitors Bureau. We meet every other month at rotating locations, and the community is always welcome and encouraged to participate in those meetings. If anybody would like their schedule for the rest of the year, they are publicly posted on our website and was in the newspaper earlier this year, but you can reach out to me if you're unable to find those for any reason. One of the things that we really wanted to highlight tonight was an opportunity for our staff to participate earlier this summer in Cromwell's Art in the Park event is the first time our staff was able to participate in that event, and we found it incredibly well organized, really engaging. We love the cooperation with the parks, the city, and the library department. We think events and activities like that are really showcase Cromwell's strength and community pride, as well as the potential that the community is bringing and being intentional behind stewarding community spirit. So we were really encouraged by that. Most people know that our office moved at the very end of last year, beginning of this year, so our office is not in Albion anymore. Our office is in Kendal inside the Community Learning Center on the first floor. And one of the interesting things that has happened in that move is our visitation numbers have gone up significantly. So last year, 2024, in our old office, we had about 165 visitors, traditional visitors come through our office. We did some pop-up Saturday hours to see if that would meet visitor needs more by offering Saturday hours. But this year, with just a regular 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. office hour schedule, we've had 265 visitors already this year, which is 100 more than last year altogether. So we're seeing really good community engagement from visitors, partners, even residents coming in that if they're making a plan to visit another part of Indiana, that they're coming into the office asking for material and saying, hey, I want to explore Holiday World with my family this summer. How can I get more information about that? So even residents are coming into our office, which has been really good to be able to serve them more directly. Trying to think of what else would be really encouraging or exciting to share, because we've done a lot this year with expanding data services and partnering with the community foundation, the AWS Foundation, and our foundations of Noble County to do an accessibility study and really assess what improvements can be made and what wins we've had in being in a more accessible community as a county. So looking at different sites, whether it's a historic site, or a restaurant, or a downtown, really exploring what that looks like for physical accessibility, as well as social accessibility. More to come out about that soon. We're really close to being in the final phases of that. Another really exciting thing is our Destination Noble 2.0 project. We have revamped and updated our website to make it more accessible, of course, and improved our marketing and data-driven responsibilities, but we've also done some really unique campaigns. We're right now in the process of distributing street banners throughout all the cities and towns that were able to participate with brand-new banners. We've also been able to partner with our Parks Department. Cromwell is one of those examples where we have a unique park destination banner that hangs in Cromwell Park and has a QR code so that people can not only learn more about what services, events, and activities are going on in Noble County, but also so that they can feel connected to the county as a whole and kind of that unified marketing. Street banners this year are going to go up in Albion, Rome City, Ligonier, and Kendal. Avila will be joining them at the beginning of next year, and we're optimistic that if the Visitors Bureau could help pay for the banners and brackets and things, when and if Cromwell be ready to put some banners up on maybe some street pools or some other locations that the city or town would prefer them to go in, that we can do that for Cromwell as well. We're wrapping up our T-shirt contest. We have our old T-shirts are on sale, but we do about 50% off. We have two brand-new T-shirts that were designed by a local who participated in our banner program contest, but they didn't win that, so we invited them to design T-shirts, and we have two new T-shirts. One of them highlights all the 117 lakes that are in Noble County. It talks about paddling. It's a short-sleeve T-shirt. We have done a long-sleeve T-shirt that's a light blue, kind of a cozy sweater kind of T-shirt that is highlighting all of the birdie experiences in Noble County, and those are for sale as well. Starting in September, we're going to be doing a fall photo contest with incentives, and this is designed to engage residents. So we're going to be giving away some gift cards and some prizes for a photo contest to highlight what Noble County looks like in the fall. So it'll run from September 15th to October 15th. So I don't know, maybe a fall festival that might be going on on this side of the county might take some photos and participate in that if they thought that was a good opportunity for them. We've got a lot of fun and exciting initiatives that are going on, but I did want to share just a couple of those fun opportunities that Cromwell can engage in. But what's been the most meaningful this year is we are almost out of visitor guides. So we printed just shy of 16,000 this year, and we're down to about 3,000 left for the year, and Kid City has already asked for 1,200. So we might have to do another printing of our visitor guides because the demand has been so high, whether that's through our office, mail-in requests that we get through our website. We also get mailed in requests for them to be mailed from our state partners, from the Welcome Centers, especially on 80, 90, and on 69 corridor. They seem to constantly need to be refilled. And so with all of that, we're just trying to do our very best to be good stewards of partnering with each city and town in a unique way. So one thing that I'm trying to do this year is ask every city and town for what they would like to see from the Visitors Bureau in 2026. So if you guys think about those things, if you have a response now, that's wonderful, but it did kind of put you on the spot. So if it would be more meaningful for you to kind of judge through, look through your strategic goals and plans, and reach out to us and see how we can partner, that would be lovely. And the last thing I wanted to share, very high level, is preparations for next year. So next year marks America's 250th birthday, and in partnership with the Visitors Bureau and the America 250 Committee, we are spearheading a patriotic celebration that will last from Memorial Day to Labor Day with a special kickoff in the summer leading up to Independence Day. And we would love to have additional Cromwell participation, and we'd love to highlight history and opportunities that are here. We meet quarterly this year, and we're meeting in Albion at the Public Library in August. But next year, we're going to meet every month, and so if someone is passionate about history, whether that's Noble County, Indiana history, or American history, we encourage them to reach out to our office so that they can participate in a meaningful, in a meaningful way. I think that's all I really had today, but I did want to give you guys the opportunity to ask any questions on behalf of Cromwell or just on behalf of yourselves as residents.
Thank you very much for your time. Any other questions?
No, I do go to the meetings, and Grace always leads the meetings with such passion and great... Like, she just always gets me excited about the future of Noble County from the meetings, so she does a great job, so. I think we should utilize her in any, you know, more, so it's going to get Cromwell out there on the map.
Having excellent board members is also a plus.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you for checking over here and for the update.
Okay. Jay, do you have anything to report?
I'm supposed to say my name and my position, right?
Yes.
Jay Rayton, I'm sitting up straight. Beyond that, and also my legal position is town attorney. Jared, do you want to explain what you called and asked me about, and I'll tell you what I learned, because you know the names.
So, the... I can't remember his name. Do you have his name?
Hedrick is his last name.
Mr. Hedrick, he called. He is the one putting the building up for the gas station, and they... It's a, as we all know, it's a tight area where they're putting it up, and they were inquiring about possibly buying our parking lot or potentially leasing for like a long period of time because they need a better access point for their truck to, you know, like, fuel trucks or whatever coming in and out of the highway. So I talked to Jay a little bit earlier today about possibilities of what we can do to help accommodate that, and then there's also an alley there. I told him we wouldn't have any obviously hard and fast answers yet, but that we could at least get some ideas flowing for options for him, but there's an alley there that I talked to Jay about possibly the town might be able to vacate. And when you vacate an alley, the property, half of it goes back to each property owner. Is that correct, Jay? So the properties adjacent to it would get half of the alley, and then the other property on the other side would get the other half. So if we potentially vacated the alley and sold them the parking lot, they would have like an L, they could own the whole L shape, and then they would be responsible for maintaining, you know, slash paving or whatever has to be done for that. So that's kind of what we talked about today. Is there any other thoughts or opinions or questions?
Want to tell a little bit about the process?
Yeah, that would be good to know what we have to do.
Okay, well, there is a general statute for how towns can sell their real property. There is a limited statute relating to when you have property that is abutting a landowner, and you want to sell it to what abutting landowner. The first question you have to locate is, was the last time this was assessed by the tax authority, was the property worth more or less than $10,000? If it was less than $10,000, you do not have to go get formal appraisals. If it's more than $10,000, you do have to get formal appraisals. And so you have to get two appraisals. Then, assuming that you want to pursue it, you follow, you have to provide notice of your interest in selling to all other abutting landowners. So it would be Mr. Hendricks, and if there's another abutting landowner, everybody around that parcel that you're looking to sell. You also have to provide a general notice to the public that you are interested in selling, and there are different things you have to do for that. I'm going to worry about what those requirements are right now. Key is, you got to notify those folks who are around there, because theory is, well, if you're selling property with an abutting landowner, maybe somebody else who of us wants to buy it, and they may in fact pay you more. So you've got to get that information. Then, if you only get one bid, you may then negotiate with that abutting landowner, and you do not have to reach... You're not talking about having to sell it for the appraised price. You may choose to sell it differently based upon your determination that it's not economically justifiable before you hold on to this property to keep it or to go through a broader appraisal and sale process. So essentially, and I'm not suggesting you do this, but let's say you notify all the abutting landowners and he offers you $10. Well, you could take a $10 offer. I assume the appraised value would be higher than that. Or you can say, you know, we don't want to sell for that, but we do want to sell to you for this. That's not $10,000, but we do want to get this, and you can engage in negotiations individually with the one landowner that you know is interested.
So what happens if another landowner wants to bid on it?
Then there is a... The statute actually calls a bidding process for those folks to essentially bid against each other. And it's a limited bidding process, but those folks would have to do that, and then in theory, you know, somebody else wants to pay more for it. Well, that's why you provide the notice, because it is... The town side may not always be able to just sell it to whom you wish. You may need to take, to get that interest. If you've got more people, then you got a process.
What about leasing?
Leasing is a different subject, but the same concept is involved, which is you may choose if you wish to lease that property to him or to his company, whatever it is, to make a decision that you have various purposes, which you are trying to accomplish for the good of the public by having that property leased to him, and therefore you will not have to open up to a general rental process. We just did this in Milford with the Old New Beginnings building. They decided they wanted to maintain and keep that as a daycare, that it was designed for daycare, but also the public good that it provided was important. So what had happened there, you'd have to identify the public good that leasing that property to him would provide. That's probably going to be a tougher one than it would be a childcare building, because it's just bare land that you're talking about selling. And if... It wouldn't make any sense to me that he would just want to lease it, or that he would just want to lease that property, because presumably that's permanent property. At some point, he may want to sell that 25, 30 years down the road to somebody else, and they'll want to make sure that the purposes for ingress and egress and parking are met down the road when he sells it. Technically, you could. Probably doesn't seem like a wise move to me, but, you know, that's your call.
Okay. Any other questions?
Like, right, like sidewalk, so the sidewalk could go away, potentially?
I'm not for sure. Technically, I think the sidewalk is in our... Is in the... Right-of-way, yes. But if he wanted to, you know, put an egress in, you know, closer so that the semi-truck could come around, I mean, part of it might turn into a driveway. So... So the parking lot is, the parking lot's here, and then the building's here. Right in between that parking lot building is like a stone pathway with these... What are they called?
Pride of all.
Like, yeah, the wood beams in the ground. They would like those wood beams removed, and that way they have more room to get around.
Did you look? Is that a planted alley right there?
It is an alley, okay, yes. And we maintain it, like, we try to keep weeds down and stuff like that. But it is not paved to my knowledge, right? It's not paved, it's still... So... Those are my thoughts. Do you have thoughts?
I don't see people parking in that parking lot. I don't see...
We use it for the festival, and I talked to him. He said, you know, obviously, he's fine with community parking there, using it during the festival, and then we also line up there around that portion of the property for the Halloween parade.
If you determine there's a, if you determine when you look at the assessments that it was assessed at $10, like I said, you won't have to get an appraisal. If it's more than $15,000, you can't follow this procedure unless you pass a pre-existing ordinance that says, you know what, that $15,000 cap the state puts on us for general sale of property, we're going to increase that cap to X. So I say that because what that means is if you find that appraisal assessment is more than $15, you will want to call me so we can get the first step of that, which would be an ordinance raising that $15,000 cap to something else. So that way you don't have to... You can still sell it under the process we're talking about here. State law allows you to turn that into a $500,000 cap and use this different method of selling, but you have to decide you're going to use that by establishing the cap. That seems silly to me, but that's what state law is.
Okay. Then I will get with you. I just talked to a realtor today just to get her opinion on it.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, so somebody needs to check the last assessed value on that tract first.
It's fit on, according to like Noble County?
Yeah.
It's $15,000.
So $15,000.
And they said comp, comp, like prices for something like that would be closer to like $25,000.
Okay. If it's exactly $15,000...
$15,200.
Then you'll have to prepare the ordinance.
Okay.
I was going to say if it was exactly 15, it says as long as it's no greater than $15,000. Well, that's $15,200. So you would have to, and I would suggest, you know, you say, okay, well, we use this process for any property under $20,000. You say, I'm not going to make it $15,201, we make it $20,000. And then you'll be able to use this process.
And that process works by...
You'll have to get two appraisals, and I'll talk to you. If you decide you want to further, we'll talk about who and what qualifications you can have for that. And that gives you the knowledge that you then have to turn out the bids to the world and see if anybody else wants to buy it except this guy. And again, the abutting landowners get specific notice by certified mail. The rest of the world gets public notice.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to wait for it?
You can go ahead and...
I'll go pray the ordinance, and I'll get that back to you.
I'll start there, and then I can at least talk to the gentleman that I talked to today, let him know kind of the... What we're thinking and the way we're going.
Yeah, I mean, I would suspect, again, without deciding that you need to have a special meeting, you have an ordinance passed raising the limit at the next meeting. You then would have, at that meeting, you could then have the notices you were... Range for the appraisals you have to range for. You could have the notices go out, set a deadline that'll be after the appraisal will come back in. So that way, by the time you get any bids back, you'll have the appraisal information plus the bidding. I don't know that you'll be able to do that in 60 days, but I would suspect 90 days would be as from today.
Okay. Any other questions on that or for Jay? Anything else, Jay? Thank you very much. So in the cafeteria of the community center, there's Cromwell memorabilia. We have discussed about getting a... Some type of display for that, and I believe you will be willing to help us organize that. So we will be going forward with contacting, what was her name?
Linda Pancock.
We'll be contacting Linda, getting that organized and getting that started. So hopefully in the near future, we'll have some memorabilia here on display. Right-of-way permitting, anything on that?
Sorry, I don't think I have a good agenda, so let me just make a couple of points. Those PO pools out of the dom and the indoor sounds for the utility tell. We got no response from the utility tell yet. We tried phone calls and emails sent, so that's pending. Indi utility coordination, about a month or so, we submitted a no action work plan for the work being done on state rule five of the ramps now is approved. I've got a story of right-of-way.
Okay, go for it.
The CCMG 2024 dash, I'm sorry. My name is Daniel Royal with the DLZ, a towns engineer consultant.
Thank you.
CCMG 2024 dash two, DLZ has requested yesterday to niblock. Construction pending late summer or fall 2025. Got a few updates on the water project, water utility with regards to funding. Did you want me to get into that now, Kayla, or you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I know Ross, I think, sent updated information right before I left, so I may not have all the updated information turned out, but I did include some of the preliminary documents in that. I'll get back in front of you guys on page four is kind of breakdowns on this project requirements and everything. That's essentially requesting an additional $200,000 from SRS. A little bit reduced from $250,000 from previous documents. And Ross, who made the tally, has provided a summary of the calculations for the rain increases, a drought rate increase, and a pulmonary noise appearing. Again, those documents may have been updated based on past email, but essentially for this meeting, we just need to introduce the drought rate increase by title, and then we can get rid of the icebox and those noise. You have to have that updated document?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number 2025 dash one and ordinance establishing rate and charges for the use and service rendered by the Water Works System of the town of Cromwell.
So again, some of those outdated sheets are going to be page five and six are the rates, seven, eight, and nine were the draft ordinance, and then 10, 11 are the notice appearing. As part of that water project and these additional funds I was requesting. Let's see, the exhibit on page 12 is the change order number three to increase the contract price by $186,800 to a total contract price of $3,37,161, and also extend the substantial reductions and final equation dates to August 8th, September 5th of this year respectively. So I would ask council for a motion to approve that change order.
And make a motion for change order number three for the increase of $186,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor? Aye.
I've got some supplemental information for as part of that change order, general allowance, our... general allowance authorization number seven. Let's see. General allowance number seven is for a total of $163,304.70. This. We'll see, sorry. So current allowance amount, including that change order, would bump up the general allowance amount to $277,000 with all the allowance I just talked to you. We would be decreasing the allowance by, requested $163,304.70, which would leave a new general allowance down to $23,495.51. So I would ask council for a motion to approve general allowance authorization number seven.
And make a motion to approve general allowance authorization number seven. Do I have a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Then on page 14 is a application number 27 for Kirk Brothers. The total payment of $102,998. I would ask council for a motion to approve application number 27.
And make a motion to approve the application number 27 to Kirk Brothers in the amount of $102,998.48. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Lastly, this, sorry, the requested $200,000 would include a DLZ supplement of $75,000. I don't have that paperwork for you guys, but I would request a motion for you guys to approve. I will get that paperwork sorted down.
You want that motion today?
If you guys are comfortable with it.
And that's, what's that for?
So it's the DLZ supplement of $75,000, that is for the additional.
Increase of cost admin?
Yep, increase in admin, closeout inspection.
Okay, I make a motion for the increase of $75,000 for DLZ, the supplement cost for admin, closeout inspection. Up to?
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, that is broken down in page four that has some requests. Otherwise, just some general updates for Project A. Construction ongoing, as I mentioned, sub-completion early August, final in September. Still pending is a review of the water plans through your signing inside the plan. You guys already accepted application number seven. For Project B, contractors working on DLZ, we have a final schedule to approve the allowance in September as well. CCNG funding update, so this kind of major one, I'm not sure if you guys have been updated in detail on this, but for indi notification on July 18th, they are taking in all applications October 2025 for the indi fiscal year of July 2025 to July 2026. And the total pool has been reduced to $1 million with a 20% match for loan. So there's only three months to secure agreements after award. And it requires starting survey and engineering early to track the deadlines. So expected construction will be somewhere 2026. And grants are expected to be more competitive because they're smaller pool funds. Next call will be in July 2026, construction 2027. So kind of summarize that, it's like, there's only going to be one application.
And they used to do 75%, right?
Yeah, so it was like. $27,580. Major change there. Indi State Road 5, small structure replacement. Just checked in the legislature this week. There's, it's still, I think, letting in 27, so they're going to start some more engineering work in 26. So current pending items from the town or DLZ. All yep.
Anything else for DLZ? Okay, Ashbury.
No action items, it's all in the report.
Okay, so no action items. And I did see that the Baker Street alleyway, you end up bypassing. So does that mean it will not be leaking for the moment?
That means it's all flowing, yeah, it's not leaking. It's flowing into that, into that storm drain.
But there's issues there that we'll have to address down the road.
There's issues with the main storm drain.
Yes. Okay. So there are some issues with our storm drains that we'll have to look at in the future. Any other questions for Sarah? Any other, anything else that you?
Did you get the Cromwell base list?
I have not. I actually thought a while back and I was.
Okay, we did finalize it at our meeting. I apologize. I will make sure you get that.
And then is there anything else to report about the leak on the 5 where I was out of town when you called me?
Just that it's repaired and it was just held prepared, it was done incorrectly.
Okay, yeah, awesome. And we're good there then?
Yep, it's all done.
Perfect. And that was Sarah with Ashbury, our operator. Marshall?
Michael Hadfield, town marshal for Cromwell. My report, we had one case investigation for leaving the scene of an accident. We had 24 calls for service. They're in my report. I don't know, we have to go through these now that we're on.
No, we got to, we just, if there's anything extra you'd like to add, you can feel free.
So the report is 24 calls for service, one case and one property damage accident for the month.
Okay, anything else for Mike?
The radar, is that done? Is that done?
He sent me an email last week and said he was coming to get it. And he's not calling back up with me, so I've been sitting on him.
Okay, I just noticed it was down again, so I just want to make sure it was okay.
No, he told me he was coming to get him. I sent him an email and he hasn't responded. So I was going to resend him and see if he's going to really come. If not, I'll put him back up because I was like, I'm not going to put him up and he comes, so. But yeah, and I'm trying to get the data out of it, but I think we're having a problem with our computer. So if he does come, then I'm going to try and have him help me get that data out of there. So, but other than that, I'm, they were kind of supposed to be gone, but he's never come.
Sounds good, thank you. Tiffany, do you have anything else to add? Anything?
I don't at this time.
Sure. Okay, Kayla?
Kayla Polis, for treasurer, the books for June have been reconciled. Please acknowledge for the record, the packet will be reviewed and approved.
Acknowledged.
The credit card packet for June is present. Please acknowledge this packet will be reviewed and approved.
Acknowledged.
The payroll allowance docket for June is present. Please acknowledge it will be reviewed and approved.
Acknowledged.
The 941 quarterly IC packet is present. Please acknowledge it will be reviewed and approved.
Acknowledged.
The 2026 budget season has begun. Please note the following important dates. August 27th, 2025 is the DLGF budget workshop meeting. That is the deadline date for when I need to have all of my numbers in place and ready for that meeting. September 16th, 2025 is when we have the 2026 budget public hearing. And then October 21st, 2025 is when we'll have the 2026 budget adoption. And then lastly, just a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. And if there is nothing else, I make a motion with you.
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes. Tell her as soon as it's done.
It's been an adjustment, but it's actually really good. And the good thing is that we moved, that we moved, and then we were able to move to. Because they're, they're on third floor, but we still get together all the time. So it's a different space, it's a different kind of.